Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to the Lone Meeting and to councillors. And to start, we have an apology from councillor Hall. And I'll move from the chair. And John, sorry, and councillor Zet for lateness. I'll move from the chair. But those apologies be executed. Second to councillor Staines. All those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Carrot. Confirmation of the agenda. Now, you may or may not be aware that item four is something we are not able to deal with today because the auditor has not finished his deliberations and his instructions back to us. So I will move from the chair. Sorry. The net effect of that is that item four will be referred to an extraordinary council meeting to be held on Tuesday the 24th at noon, 24th of March at noon. And I will move from the chair that the agenda be confirmed subject to that item being referred to that extraordinary council meeting. Second to councillor Staines. Any discussion? Councillor Wilson.
Your worship, I just wondered if items five, six and seven could be taken as items five, eight, and ten and then dealt with together.
Yes, I had intended to have that effect. So, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that we need to include it in the confirmation.
Well, it would seem that if we ask some questions on one, on seven, that might relate better to five and we shouldn't be asking questions on all three sections, that's all.
No, no, I appreciate that. I've got that in my notes. That five includes councillor.
Will we be being invited to that meeting?
Sorry?
Will we be being invited to that meeting? So I don't need to put it in my diary or just be a magic.
No, you will be. It's, I'm just noting it for the purposes of this resolution. Councillor Bakers.
Will the delay of item four taking it to the next, or to an extraordinary meeting, will that make it any tighter in terms of timeframe to organise, for instance, a proper debt graph that has the last 10 years as well as the proposed future 10 years? Is it going to create a difficulty for staff in terms of changing anything that we might want to change in the draft?
I think the whole reason for needing to delay it is that the auditor apparently wants changes in the consultation document. And so any changes, the time between now and the extraordinary meeting will be used to do any changes.
So I would like some changes as well as the auditor. What should I now do?
You will have the opportunity to put forward suggestions.
Should I forward them to the chief executive?
A few of them to me. The only difficulty will be if you want changes and the auditor wants something that's completely diametrically opposed, in which case we may have some issues. Or if you want changes in opposition to each other. But yes, in fact, this gives us a little more time to make changes in response to councillors. So we will be compiling a list of all the changes for us for again, because we have had some more through since the last meeting.
Thank you very much.
It's been moved to seconded. That the agenda be confirmed with that proviso that that item go to 24th of March. All those in favour please say aye. Item against. Item three is for the majority of councillors. Item four, we have just, 24th. Item five, I'm right, Mr McInley. And just to explain what councillor Wilson was referring to in these. The item five, the seven months, obviously includes the same data, all the data from item six and seven, because they are all the six months to December and five months to the end of November respectively. So what I intend to do is, have you asked questions, did I whatever, on item five? And then I will take the whole three together because clearly that one has been covered at that point. So would you like to question the reading? Is that on?
Is it on? I had to be right one way or the other, didn't I? Gavin Loggins, your financial controller introduced last time. Gavin's the subject matter expert in all of these things. I'm here for the glory, I hope. So key points for the seven months, first seven months a year is that the surplus is just over $4 million, which is $6.7 million greater than budget. The majority of the surplus or the variance from budget is due to the White Power Fund, which is about $5.2 million higher. Other impacts on the surplus have been the timing and savings and maintenance of about $1.5 million. Savings and interest expense, $1.2 million. Depreciation savings of about $0.8 million. And additional income at $1.6 million, particularly for proceeds from insurance and bequests. These partially offset by lower funding from AZTA mainly due to timing of projects being slower than anticipated. And the loss in sale of a property, which was just under $1 million. Capital expenditure was just under $22 million, which is $11 million lower than budget, but $6.5 million higher than last year at the same time. So our capital expenditure programme has been increasing, but we're still behind budget. Debt, at the end of January was $223 million, and that includes short and long term debt. This is $25 million better than budget and also $5 million less at the same time last year. So if those, summary of key items that I see, will take any questions?
Questions, councillors. Councillor Law.
Grant, the, sort of, the asterisk earlier, the down spend, the $11 million that we're down on capital expenditure, what are the ramifications of that by the end of the year? Are we going to just be significantly lower or we kind of have a catch up phase?
Traditionally, council carries forward between $15 and $30 million worth of capital expenditure projects.
Yeah, those projects, what is the implication then for next year's budgeted capital expenditure programme?
So what is, we allow that and increase their capital expenditure for that year's budget as well?
So it is increased?
So it is effectively just a time issue.
So the budget doesn't start at the end of next year's budget, it starts with?
So next year's budget plus the approved carry forwards. So it's up to council to approve those carry forwards?
Yep.
Paper comes through later in the year for those.
Councillor Thompson.
Just a couple of questions. One is, with the debt outstanding and that, do we currently carry a bad debts provision on the balance sheet? And if so, is it very much?
I don't know how much though. We do carry a provision, there is a provision in the council I've seen. I can't quantify the value, so I can certainly come back to you on that if councillors wish to.
What's the policy around whether, when and whether we write that provision off?
So first thing is generally we don't have too much trouble with debt, particularly for rates, because we can, if there's a mortgage on the property, we can go to the bank and actually ask for that mortgage or the rates to be paid on the property. We review the debts on a monthly basis across council, so that we've got a good understanding of where our bad, our likely debts are to be. So.
The second question relates to the legacy to the art gallery. I understand why we have to show that as income, but is there an offset that we, that we have to show? Because presumably it's tagged to something and it will be spent on something that equally won't be in the budget. How do we handle that?
Sorry, we just need to check whether it was actually physical goods or actually cash. And I don't know off the top of my hand.
I believe that it's actually cash for a specific purpose for purchase, but I'm not sure what the exact purchase is. But I believe it's cash.
So effectively that will mean that our capital expenditure in that particular area will increase as we purchase the, adhere to the terms of the bequest.
My last is question, it's, it's not so much a question, it's a rhetorical question. But I regularly read all sorts of things about our liability figure in the balance sheet for derivatives, and I note that it's currently about $6 million less than it was at the beginning of the year. And I also read that this is jiggery pokery from where we've managed to reduce debt from. Can you just for the sake of clarification, explain the, how that works and confirm that there is no additional cash as a result of that change?
So effectively the derivative number in the balance sheet is a mark to market number of debt across council, which is effectively not cash. If you continue to pay your debt as you would normally, there's no change at all. It would be if you wanted to pay up all your debt as at that date, that's how much the impact would be. So effectively there's no cash impact from that number. And it changes on an annual basis depending on where interest rates have gone and where our interest profile is.
Councillor Wilson.
I just want to follow up a question from councillor Thompson, where he asked about the debt. And I presumed he was talking about rates, but we don't have an ability to write off rates because it's covered in our rates remission policy, isn't it?
Sorry?
We don't have an ability to write off bad debt as far as rates go and come because that is dealt with under a policy of rates remission, isn't it?
So rates remission is about when we are foregoing rates. There will always be some bad debt because some rate payers, they might come to receivership or bankruptcy, which is separate to rates remission. Rates remission is looking in advance while you're going to remit rates. Bad debts is when the business has gone belly up and they can't pay their rates any further.
Just out of curiosity more than anything else, we actually write off rates rather than take it with the land at that point?
It will depend on the situation.
Councillor McTague.
No, it's just struck me that the person that would probably answer my question isn't here, so I'll send it through.
Any further questions? So would someone like to move in the recommendations for five, six and seven? Councillor Calvert, seconded. Councillor Staines. Discussion. There is none, I'll put it. This is for five, six and seven. All those in favour please say aye. Against? Carrot. Now on item eight, the updated internal audit policy. I'll take it you, I guess maybe? Mr McInley? Would you like to question this?
All right. So obviously the paper says, the policy has gone through the Audit and Risk Subcommittee. I guess the key thing is the policy sets out the nature, role, responsibility, scope and authority for the internal audit function within council. It's a new policy and I think it's a good step in the right direction. I'll take any questions.
Questions, councillors. Your honour, would someone like to move the recommendation? Councillor Staines, second. Councillor Thompson. Discussion. There is none?
Yes, there is none. Rather than letting a gap pass by, can I just make a small, I think this is actually really, a really important change and I just think that we need to emphasise that rather than just let it pass by. It's not to suggest that there hasn't been internal audit done in the past, but where it has been, it's not, it's not a process that has been under the purview of governance. It's a process that's been organised and under the oversight of management. And so to the extent that that internal audit process might throw up some issues of concern or whatever, governance would not necessarily be even remotely aware of that. So it's, it's an important change to actually have a formal internal audit policy and process in place that takes this stuff through the Audit and Risk Committee and ensures visibility of it and also ensures that governance has some oversight to where the prioritisation for that internal audit work goes. It is not necessarily cheap to do internal audit and in my view, the budget is too small. We may have to slide slightly into that. But this is actually for me, when I first came onto council four years ago, was one of the early questions I asked around internal audit and I was kind of staggered to find that we just didn't have an internal audit policy. And that just struck me as extremely odd for an organisation of this size. And so I just want to make those comments. I think this is important and we should recognise that rather than just let it slide past.
Councillor McTague.
Just a follow up question to that, your worship. In relation to the budget, is that something that will be considered as part of long term plan discussions or was that something that was discussed at risk and audit and it was thought within that committee that there was an adequate budget for this? Was that councillor Thompson's view?
I'd just add that for the 15, 16 financial year, this budget has been increased significantly from the current budget.
Councillor Bakers.
Is it the intention to widely advertise who would be the whistleblower point of contact by the Audit and Risk Subcommittee or is that fall to some other part of the council?
So there's, we're currently going through a process of looking at the training needs across council, particularly around fraud. So we've got some, with some local suppliers about training for fraud. As part of that, the whistleblower policy or whistleblower contact details will be made aware to all the staff. The current fraud policy, which is on the DCC's website as well, also has reference to the whistleblower and who they can contact. So staff should be aware of who they should be able to contact.
And what about people from the general public that want to whistleblow in somebody's ear? I'm beginning to tire of the role myself, given recent events.
So the policies on the DCC website, so therefore they can refer to that if they want to refer to either, if it's a fraud, they can go to the fraud control officer, which is currently myself, or if they feel uncomfortable with myself, they can go to the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee.
Councillor Calvert.
Could we in that regard make sure that the, if you put whistleblower into the council website, it comes up with somewhere to go or the sort of words you could use? Because our website can sometimes be a bit clumsy and that's the sort of thing where it wouldn't be at all obvious.
Yes, we'll follow up, we'll put in some search words and check that that does come up in response.
Right, no further discussion. It's been moved to seconded. I'll put it. All those in favour please say aye. Against? Carrot. Item nine, updated asset disposal rider policy procedures.
Thank you. So obviously this is an update of the current asset disposal rider policy. The policy sets out the principles and processes for disposal of council assets. It's trying to get, make sure that council achieves the best value for money for our surplus assets. That's conducted in efficient, effective, transparent manner and that all the documentation is appropriately authorised and documented so to protect the organisation and individuals involved in the process. Just take any questions.
Questions, councillor. Councillor McTague.
But I have just one question, your worship, and it's, it's in relation to the companies actually. I guess I'm really pleased to see us adopting this series of, and this is the latest in a series of different policies and procedures updating our audit and risk area. And I note that in our statement of intent, which is the same as every year, it notes that our companies will ensure that the operating policies for each of the group companies are consistent with the operating policies of the DCC. And I just wondered whether, and while we're going through the process of adopting these, there is some mechanism to ensure that DCHL is aware of them, mentioned through, through you grant, but, and that they are progressively adopted by other group members.
So effectively what we're doing is when we've, council's approved a policy, we will then distribute that out to the companies for them to review and if appropriate for them to adopt. Not all, obviously policies are appropriate for the group compared to council because they're specifically designed for council. So we are disseminating that information.
Any further questions? Right, someone like to move the recommendation? Move councillor Staines, second councillor Noon. Discussion. I'll put it. All those in favour please say aye. Against? Carrot. Item 10, final council control organisations, application for exemption.
Move. Second.
Bless it now.
So this is just, and so exemption we apply for on a regular basis and it's every three years. So these three companies have been in existence for three years, we applied for exemption and were granted it back in 2012. So we're just seeking the exemption for another three years. It obviously means we don't have to do full reporting etcetera in relation to these companies. They are shelf companies, they don't do anything other than hold the name on behalf of council.
Any questions first? It's been moved. I'll take the second vote. No questions? Move councillor Wilson, second to councillor McTague. Are you seconding it?
I guess the only question is, do we still need them?
I believe the names, what we're hanging on to, so it's the names of Tourism Dunedin, Dunedin Events and Dunedin Visitor Centre. I think parks those on behalf of council.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? I'll put it. All those in favour please say aye. Against? Carrot. Right, on to item 11, draft statements of intent, Dunedin City Holdings. Welcome, Mr Crombie.
Such a little bit of truth.
Right, would you like to introduce yourself? I'll take this pretty much straightforward. Take your questions. Questions, councillors, in the first instance, and then we can move on to the recommendations. Councillor Calvert.
I think you've had forwarded to you my, not necessarily fabulous intent summarising the DCHL statement of intent. Would you tell us whether you do consider it to be an appropriate summary or? I've left out in it the bits that say things like, sort of, we will be a good employer or a good corporate citizen and things because obviously they're things we have to do anyway.
Yes, I have had your notes forwarded to me and I think the front part where you've summarised the specifics, I think pretty much cover off where it all sits from there. And then some issues you've raised, the considerations as we go from there. So thank you for that.
Could we then have some, some responses to some of the, that they're sort of really a set of questions, if you like?
Okay.
Well, can I suggest councillor Calvert, that you are more specific?
Yeah.
Because for the benefit of those of us who read them, if they did, if we did some time ago, and for the benefit of the media and the staff, you need to be specific about your questions rather than just saying, I said a lot of things, what's your reaction?
Yeah, sorry, they, yes, they seem sort of, how do we monitor DCHL? Is there, we do seem to not have a process of monitoring much that we hear back from outside the financial sort of areas.
Okay, so from DCHL's perspective, we're required obviously formally twice a year to report to you, which is in the six month accounts and the 12 month accounts. So that's a formal process. We also have a process where we meet with council members every quarter. So that's the purpose of that briefing, to update you with all the issues that are going on within the holding company and take opportunity to conversation at that time. So there are the four, four more pieces there. At the same stage, we meet with the mayor and chief executive at each of our board meetings so that if there's any issues that are happening in play, they're up to date at that time. And obviously we have a formal reporting responsibilities in the statement of intent, but also we operate on a most prosperous basis with the mayor and the chief executive to make sure that anything that's in play there. So there's the formal processes that we go through.
So the particular, it seems to me if you're monitoring, if DCHL is monitoring the performance or the carrying out of the statements of intent of the other ones, that we would expect back the results of your monitoring all the things in the statements of intent, not just the things you notice as being out of line. And I mentioned a couple, did the safety record stand up? Was the financial? There's a whole lot of stuff in the statements of intent which we don't hear. And I'm guessing it's because there is, there's nothing going wrong as far as you're concerned, but that isn't the same as monitoring because what we're not hearing is that there was monitoring and that this is the outcome and that there's nothing to be concerned about. We're just hearing nothing.
Okay, so perhaps if I redo it, so just to help council understand how we handle the companies, so each of the companies or those in our investment portfolio report to our board every month. So it's a formal written report comes to the board each month built around this scenario. We then meet twice a year with all the chairs and chief executives in one meeting to make sure that we've got a group across there. And in this last meeting, we actually had the mayor and chief executive attend there as well. And then we have a rotating session at each of our board meetings where the chair and chief executive of one of the entities will come to us and they'll spend an hour, hour and a half and we'll work through those specific issues. So there's a, there's a clear and open conversation there and if any issues, I can say that we're very happy with the openness of all of the entities talking to us before anything happens. So when it comes to the reporting of issues coming up, again, from a councillor's perspective, you do receive the formal written financial statements for the six month and 12 month scenario, which the auditors require them to go against their statement of intents as well. So you would see anything formally come through there. You correct that we wouldn't raise at your quarterly briefing anything that was acting within the scenario, if you like. So rather than periodically saying, we have done this and there is nothing for you to worry about, if there was something to worry about, we would raise it. So for instance, the health and safety one, I think I've been talking about the last three or four briefings, there's a huge amount of work going on in the group to make sure that we've got those under control. Now, we're happy with the way the group is working with that, but that's the reason that was raised with you. If anything had come out of that, that was material, then we would certainly be raising it in those forms.
So would it be possible, because I think all the work's going on in the background, it just isn't coming to us and our role is to monitor you doing that and we're not seeing it.
I'm happy to put a positive statement in our briefings each quarter. I give you the opportunity to ask any questions at that stage.
So could you at least annually and at the time when we're looking at the statement of intent for next year, might be a good time, or in the quarter before that, tell us how each company was going against the, all the performances they have in their statement of intent so as that we can look to see that you're monitoring that because that's our only feedback.
I'm happy to report back on the processes we use it. Absolutely. Definitely.
Can I add there, sorry councillor Calvert, that as part of the annual report process, the statement of service performance, which is performed by all the companies, has that review in it as well. And a lot of the statement of intent is actually drives that statement of service performance. So you are keeping that in that on an annual basis as well.
Yes, we're just, it's things like they just, if you just flick something in the middle of it, like buy local if possible. And we don't have any idea whether any of them are doing that and whether you're looking to see whether any of them are doing that or. So all of the things that are in that, it seems to me, we need to know that you know are being performed according to those statements, at least annually, I would have thought that would be it. The, could you tell us a wee bit about why DCHL for the year coming up thought that it was going to have a whole lot more money last year than it now thinks in its statement of intent for the year starting in June? I think probably.
Could you give me a bit of that? I'm not sure that that's how we would see it.
The figure in. But the figure in the 15-16 year for the total amount that falls out the bottom, for want of a better word to us, for dividend and interest and the like, was like 15 million or something, it was predicted to be 14 or 15 million or whatever last year. And for the year coming up and for this year, it's predicted to be 11. Grant, I think, has had that question, so he can probably explain.
All right, so I guess what we're talking about here, Hillary, is that for the last 14 months of, at least I've been involved, and I know since Graham's been involved, DCHL has been indicating that the dividend has been going to reduce from the group and for a variety of reasons. I assume you're referring back to, if you go back three years, the statement of intent would have been shown that the dividend was going to be at a higher level than where it's currently.
No, I'm talking about the statement of intent from last year for next year, which didn't signal that.
So no, the statement of intent from last year didn't indicate that the dividend was going to drop, so.
But not for the year coming up?
No, it did, for the 15-16 year, we indicated that the drop in dividend was going to be significant. And that's, that's why we reduced council's budget by the four and a half million dollars that we have reduced it by.
Okay, well, I won't bore people at this stage, I'll just keep the conversation going, I think. Can we have the statements of intent of the subsidiaries laid out in the same sort of fashion? I know that the subsidiaries are a wee bit different, but there is a lot of things in common about them. Could they be laid out in the same fashion so as you can look at them in a comparable way for us, please? They're very hard to look one compared with the other.
I understand exactly what you're pointing. One of the issues we had is potentially when you have a formulaic presentation, it becomes a formula. And so we have been pushing subsidiaries to put the actual flavour to these documents so that we can understand better where they see the emphasis. Otherwise, it becomes a bit of a form filling exercise, which is not what we aim these documents for. So I do understand you look for consistency, we'll have a look at that across the group. But be we a part of the reason for trying to make them a little different, and they're not different in content, they're different in style, is to make sure that we actually do get a feeling from the company that these are not just things you take, they are real.
Could we, in particular, when we're talking about things like whether we're maximising returns or optimising them, which appear differently in each of the documents and do mean something different, but appear in the same sentence as if they're the same word, if we could decide which of those it is, whether, because I presume DCHL has the same approach to that as the subsidiary companies, whichever word they think that they want.
And that in itself might be an interesting conversation, because there's always a tension between the holding company and what we're trying to do is just maximise the benefit across, and it's group directors of a company who may be looking to optimise and then balance the other side. But I do take your point, actually, your words are clear about moving the comments.
Sorry, this is, this is why I gave them to your advances, you'd know. Could you tell us a wee bit more how, what the, that DCHL can only spend 10 million without, or can spend 10 million dollars without coming back to us, but the subsidiaries can spend in some cases 5 million dollars and possibly on several occasions, which seems to me that to make a wee bit of a nonsense, and it might be just that I don't understand properly of how there's a 10 million dollar limit back to us, but could be made up of three or four, five million dollar lots from subsidiaries?
And again, it's in, it's in different entities because of the structure. So a subsidiary company of DCHL has a 5 million dollar limit where they are required to come to DCHL for approval prior to then expending that. We, obviously as DCHL, if we as a company look to spend more than 10, we would come to you. Now, I would reiterate that there's no surprise scenario here, so if we were looking to spend anything into those sort of investment areas, we'd obviously be involved with the council representatives on the way through, that's where we are. But I think when you're looking at the different things, they are legal entities, so it's not like five divisions of one company coming up, they are separate entities doing their thing and then coming through from the.
So they could.
So the approval process sits with DCHL for the subsidiary companies up to five, and then DCHL's approval process sits with you above us.
So they could be spending several lots of four and a half or something, several companies, and they could have spent 20 million dollars and you wouldn't need to come back to us, or would you?
Wouldn't need to come back to council.
Because they wouldn't have had to come to you.
They would have had, yeah, but remember they are reporting to us monthly and we are working very closely with them, so.
But they'd be allowed to do that?
Yes.
Technically, you wouldn't, would that mean you would have to come back to us when you saw the agglomerate figure of 20 million dollars, or whether you wouldn't, because it's four different ones from two different subsidiaries, or?
No, they're companies further down the chain, so no, we wouldn't, we'd boast things with DCHL.
I think I'm done in this regard to DCHL, thank you.
Thank you councillor Van Der Sis.
Having been elected 10 years ago and having seen a lot of SOI limits in my day, and having seen a number of them breached, what consequences have there been in the past when a company or DCHL itself has breached, say, the 10 million dollar limit or the 1 million dollar limit?
In my time, I'm not aware of that actually occurring, and.
Give you some examples, when DCHL was chaired by councillor Hudson and I asked.
Well, councillor, councillor Van Der Sis, I don't think it's reasonable to expect Mr Crombie to give an answer about historical circumstances prior to his taking a position.
Right, so is there anyone here that can give an answer on what sort of consequences there might be for breaches of SOIs? Or are we just ticking off SOIs without any knowledge of what breach consequence might be? I've got a list of them here.
Just, can you clarify your question you're asking, what the cons, not, you're not asking a historical question, you're answering, asking what the consequences would be if the SOI weren't adhered to?
Yes, for instance, if DCHL went and spent 14 million perhaps on some property rather than the 10 limit that they were allowed, if for instance DVML spent more than a million dollars on something when the SOI said they weren't allowed to, as has happened in the past.
Mr Mackenzie, would you be able to pass online on that?
Sometimes it's a bit like rugby, you know, I'm going to get blindsided. So effectively the, if there's a breach, the ultimate sanction the council can take is it can sack the board of directors. Obviously, it would depend on the seriousness of the breach, but that's effectively the sanction that council could take.
That's it?
Yes, yeah.
We've got no other recourse?
Not that I'm aware of, because under company's law, the directors are there for the best interest of that company.
Councillor Thompson.
All the questions have been about DCHL, are you wanting to simply deal with DCHL first, or can I ask about other? Okay. Well, I'm on the, still on 11, but it's just whether you're wanting to take them or not.
Well, maybe we just stick to 11 at the moment and come back to the subsidiary companies, because I note that they're in 12.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, quite right, yeah, 12, I'm a politician.
Councillor Lord.
My question was to do with item 12, so I'll just wait.
Councillor McTansett.
So my query is about DVL and DVML, which I think are part of 11.
So can I explain why we've got the split? Because basically.
Directly controlled.
Correct, those three entities as opposed to the others that are controlled directly by DCHL.
So my query is just in relation to the timing of, so the DVL and DVML statements of intent, as I read them, are simply placeholders pending the outcomes of our consultation process around changes highlighted by the stadium review. I guess my query is, will we have time between the outcome of that process and June 30th, or whatever the adoption date is for the statements of intent for those amendments to be made?
So the process is, what planners do is have a council workshop to go through all the statements and individually with the CEOs of those companies, so they can hear your feedback on what changes you might prefer or would like to see in those documents. They will then come back to the June council meeting, which is probably the same meeting that you're going to adopt the annual plan or long term plan. So that would be, hopefully, if that should line up on that one particular day.
And so the workshop, will that be before or after LTP hearings?
It will be before.
Before.
Yeah, but the statement of intent shouldn't actually change that significantly, because all you're doing is looking at a change in ownership at the high level.
And potentially a re-review and various other different.
And I think probably, I think your point is if this number's changing, given the restructure, how does that work? We have the ability to bring a statement of intent at any stage by giving notice. So I think if we did get the timing out because of those two events, then the new statement of intent would come quite quickly, I think, to council to say, this is the new number, given this change in structure that's going on from there. It's probably appropriate.
Councillor Wilson.
Oh, it's just a minor point on just on page 1114, the mission statement for Dunedin Venues Limited. Is that a realistic mission statement, which is to provide the best stadium in New Zealand for sporting, cultural or entertainment events? Is it realistic in New Zealand by stadiums that we can get to that point with the budgets we have?
I'd like to think so. It's a very highly rated stadium by, well, NJR, if you rank it as one of their top.
I totally appreciate the sporting priorities for rugby, albeit it is only rugby, and a few other sports. I mean, there's a lot of sports we can't play in there, but the other one, and I'm not, my issue here is that I think it's fine to aspire to have a fantastic stadium, and I think in many ways it is, but without the curtain and the issues with sound system. I'm just wondering whether we're leading with this, a potential investment that we're not aware of by making that statement, because I'm concerned about what those cost curtains and the sound systems might otherwise be.
I think it's having a, having an aspirational goal, it would be kind of odd to say that the goal is to have a reasonably good stadium, or to have a stadium that's not bad for the limited budget. But certainly having an aspirational goal doesn't in any way commit us to spend, for example, for curtains. So that's a specific, that then has to come forward in its normal budgetary process.
I appreciate that, and the only reason I raised it, and understanding that we at council, Van Der Sis coming from some of his questions, is that I think it's actually fine that we say that it can be the best stadium it can be, and that it provides well for the Dunedin. But I am concerned if we try and pit ourselves against every other stadium in New Zealand that we're actually aspiring to something that may give us an end result that we're not looking for financially. And that's just my concern.
Further questions? Councillor Pickford.
Yeah, I had a question on the same area too, 1124. It was about the performance measures and the focus on rugby. And I would have expected to see some focus also on the cultural and entertainment that the, that this venue can provide. And perhaps, and it's maybe too late now, but in future, I would like to see some aspiration in that, in those areas as well, and just kind of what they might have in mind in terms of the future fixtures there.
It's certainly not too late for that sort of feedback. And that's what this process is about, the reason it's here in draft, is so that we can hear that feedback and take that back to the organisation, so we'll make that.
Further questions? Someone like to move the recommendation on page 11.1? Councillor Thompson, second councillor Staines, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Fair. On to item 12, which is the statements of intent for the group of companies.
I think so, I think again, we'll take them as read. These are slightly different and the PCHL signs them off, and you've had the consultation purposes of this, for us to hear your feedback, so that we can then write and get that answered.
Questions? Councillor Thompson.
My first question really relates to all of them, but, and it picks up on something that councillor Calvert alluded to, which is the requirement that all things being equal, that the companies will work to procure local business. And it does concern me that there is no methodology for evaluating the extent to which that's being complied with. And I just wonder whether some consideration could be given. I know it's not an easy thing to come up with, and I don't even care, to be honest, if it's not on this one, but I think at the very least it needs to be in the next one, and some thought needs to be given to how one would measure that, because otherwise, we as a council are asking you to do something, but we have no idea whether you are, Grant. And the complexities and difficulties of both doing it and measuring it would be interesting, I think, and would as well be back to us too. So can I ask that? My second question is, I'm on page four of the Aurora report, and I think that wherever possible, these things should be understandable by mayor mortals. And I draw your attention to the Aurora pricing methodology being consistent with the following pricing principles, being subsidy free, equal to or greater than incremental costs and less than or equal to standalone costs. And there's a whole series of other things in that list that I don't understand, and I'm sure most people don't. Could we have this rewritten in a way that would be understandable? I mean, there's a, there's a whole lot of things that basically say, I think, charge as much as we think we can get away with, but you wouldn't know that from necessarily reading it. So is it possible for that to be re-looked at? I, I know that some of it's arising out of commerce commission requirements and that, but a plain English translation, I think, would be useful.
Yes, unfortunately, a lot of that has come directly basically from commerce commission and how they set pricing, so we'll ask the board to reconsider that.
Councillor Van Der Sis.
On the bottom of 12.5, network reliability, and we've had a bit of publicity over that recently, it says that they want to meet or exceed the regulated quality thresholds determined by the commerce commission. What process is triggered if the reliability doesn't meet that threshold? And who triggers that process? It's obviously not the commerce commission.
Not being experts in the regulatory framework, my understanding is safety and saving, which are the two key measures, which are in the back, which are around reliability of the network and how often they're up and how often they're down effectively. There's a target set for those for each 12 month period, that is measured by the regulator, who is commerce commission from there. If you've missed that target in one year, you get a letter which says you missed that target. If you miss it two years in a row, there's then an audit in place from the commerce commission, an external third party, on the reliability of your network, and then they have the powers to require remedial action to pick it up from there. So that's the process, that reliability doesn't work, that's what it is doing.
Okay, so that's a process that would probably take two years, from what you've said. One year they miss, get a letter, second year and.
Second year, yeah.
Is there anything else that we can do in terms of dealing to any reliability issues that might be a wee bit more proactive than two years?
Absolutely, so there's the regulatory piece, and it's the outcome, so I thought it was the question you're asking. From a management point of view, both the management, obviously, and the board, and the holding company board, take those measures as a key measure each month, as to where that hits to from there. If there are issues appearing, because sometimes they're weather related, sometimes they're infrastructure related, sometimes it's a combination of both, then it's a matter of something, or why are those issues occurring? And is that a, is that a maintenance issue, is it a capital issue, is it just a small issue? And is that a maintenance issue, is it a capital issue, is it just a small issue? How do we handle those things from there? So they are actively being monitored, because that's one of their key.
Okay, in the last few months, there were four different kinds of issues that just seem to coincidentally arrive in a fairly small time. What did you actually do then, and are you satisfied that we're not going to see that sort of cluster again?
I can't make a promise about what might happen in the future. We certainly asked a question around each one of those and had a report, each appeared, and what was done subsequently to that? And was there a connection, so was there some sort of underlying infrastructure issue, as in systems, that are causing that? In those cases, in the last six months, there was no connection as such between them that would say that, so it's just.
Just unfortunate to us.
Yeah, I don't know what happens in the future, but they are having those conversations, so very comfortable about that.
Counselor Lord.
Graham in the Delta 1230, page 1230. I get a wee bit concerned with the statement of intent when it says things like grow the company into a leading New Zealand business, or taking into account the cash free flows required to meet the objectives of the shareholder, or to further diversify and expand the company's activities and the operation and management of infrastructure assets. Look, while I know that a bit like having the best stadium in New Zealand, it's a wonderful goal, but I just wonder, are these appropriate, do you think, for a company like Delta in the position that it is at the moment, about 26% equity? I mean, if these were yearly or two yearly, I wonder if they should be a wee bit less ambitious when they say more intense. And prior to my time, there's obviously been things like Laggot and Jack's Point and those sort of things. Are we absolutely confident that we won't see things like that happen again? Are we absolutely confident that those things cannot happen again in our current way they're set up with you overseeing them and SO? Not overseeing you.
And having learned from a speech I listened to, Counselor Thompson once gave to a policy graduation about being absolutely confident in the future. And you can never say that, what I can say is that the processes I think that are in place at the present are very robust. There's a great transparency between the organisation, management up to board, up to us from there. And so I do believe that if this company, or even if the company started heading down any of those tracks, A, we would have line of sight over it, and B, that I'm sure there'd be a holding pad going to play there. So I am very comfortable where we are at this stage, that they're not looking to rush off into all sorts of other things. I think that the ground has changed significantly since.
And again, those things can occur with that, you know, and about them.
Well, that's my understanding, and what I've seen happen in front of me, that's how it's been occurring. They've been very open and very transparent about what they've been doing.
I guess the only point I'd say there, Mike, is that if they're below those threshold limits that we spoke about earlier, the DCHL might not necessarily be made aware of them. But as Graham's quite rightly said, the communication between the companies at the present is very, very good. The other point I would make is that the balance sheet currently is in no position to be taken on additional investments. It needs to be rebuilt and, yeah.
Counselor Calvert.
My questions are a little clustered around Delta with some of the same concerns that perhaps Counselor Lord had. We're looking at our companies to see what they're worth and what we might do with them at the moment, or what they're worth anyway. I've described that as whether they're fit for purpose, I don't know whether we're going that far. We also have had in the past and continue to have some serious questions posed to councillors and that councillors have posed to other people, particularly about Delta. And they're around whether the things that have happened in the past could happen again, whether Delta is effectively buying worth by putting in tenders for things that it's losing money on or not making the money it might be on. There's obviously some concerns about the CEO of Delta being paid more than a lot of other people. Well, pretty much everybody else. And there's also concerns around whether if it does more than 50% of its work for council other parts of the group, it will start leading to tender in a different way or do things in a different way. There's other things that I'm not particularly mentioning here, but they all keep coming to us and we keep sort of wanting reassurance that you're looking after these things. Nothing in the documents that I've seen would suggest that there's been any changes. There's a no annual statements or statements of intent for the last four years that I've looked at or things. Has there been anything from Delta saying, whoops, that wasn't such a bright idea? Even that whoops sort of noise, there's been a, we've divested ourselves out of somewhere. But there's been no suggestion, nothing in there tells me that these things couldn't happen again. And nothing gives me an idea of how we could go about expressing our concerns or talking to Delta directly in any way and saying, hey, we're just, for example, in council not happy about paying a chief executive something. Or we're not happy about the idea that they might be expanding when we think they made a pig's ear of last time they tried that or anything. There's no, where do you see the ability for us to be making these statements? Is there a venue, can we have some way, somehow, of feeling that we're having any direct influence over what's going on there? Since they're called council-controlled companies, your reassurance that you're watching over them now and probably they're going to be all right isn't the same as us being able to directly canvas some of these issues that are going to keep coming up and people out there keep wanting to know about.
Well, I'm not necessarily sure how, I guess my answer is the same as I go, Counselor Ward, around the process that we're in play from there. So when we report to council, you do provide me feedback, this process provides me feedback, you provide me feedback on the quarterly, where all that comes from. And I get feedback through that process. I talk obviously to the chairs and the CEO of those companies and it gets feedback from there. So they're not operating in a blind view from where your views are held in that formal structure. Again, the structure that we have and how it works is that the holding company's purpose is to monitor their performance, that's what we do. And then we report to you, you provide our information to us. I'm not sure I can, I'm not going to say true, that's not the right answer. But that's the reality of the process that you have in play is to go through from there.
So the best we can do is just say to members of the public or other people concerned, it's all right, we've told Graham and he was listening to us that day.
Well, I don't think.
Is that the best we can do?
I think the answer you perhaps should give is that we have a holding company in play who is watching what's going on. We've been very clear in our expectations of that holding company and they're acting on that.
Well, we haven't, for example, in the SO, it's been proposed to us that Delta grow. And that might not, this might not be a good time for Delta to grow, that's something you've proposed to us to comment on. So we just tell people, we've told Graham. So there is no way we can have effectively a conversation that we know anything about your feedback on, we just have to rely on that you've heard something from us and that.
Can I just reiterate the fact that we are going to have a workshop and discuss these with the CEOs of the companies involved? So you can give that feedback directly to it. That hasn't happened in the past, but when we went through this process last year, there was clear signs from council that you wanted to have a more active role in the statements of intent. You've got to recall what the statement of intent is for, it's looking forward, it's not a backward-looking document. So I'm not quite sure why we'd be saying, whoops, we've done something wrong, because it is trying to be looking forward. I guess the other point is, I'd suggest is that if a company's not growing, effectively nowadays you're going backwards. And, you know, I don't think we should be, and there's been a couple of comments about whether there should be aspirational goals or not. I think we'd best be looking, aiming higher than just looking at mediocrity. Personally, I think that we've looked at mediocrity too long, and look where it's got us at times.
If only we aimed for mediocrity in some of these. Would those be public workshops? Because what I would like is for the people out there to be able to understand that there's been some answers to some of these questions, rather than just things we do in secret. So some of these issues can just be out there, we're just pretending they're not there, but they are there.
So the plan is the workshop would be for councillors and it would be in private. The opportunity for the public would be when the final statements and intent come back to the June meeting. And that's when you could have the public discussion. Just trying to give feedback in a positive manner to the group.
The other part of that is if we have any thoughts about what we might be doing differently. And I'm thinking here of Aurora, and just with what I've said here about the proliferation of poles and the choices we're making surrounding, not only putting poles back there rather than underground, but possibly putting more of them here, there and everywhere. Again, poles are something that the public might have some thoughts about, but there's no no way for them to feed into something that says that we are interested in the look of our city and that a council, so-called controlled company in there, might respond to what we think. Can we have any way of asking, we ask people about everything we do, but what we do is a very small part of what we do because it's mostly done through DCHL.
Was that a question?
The question was, could we, can you see any way that the public could feed back into that about the things our council-controlled companies are doing? Not with a view to telling them what to do, but to helping them understand what people might want in some areas. If council did these things directly, they would be able to feed into the process. Because they're not doing them directly, they haven't got a venue to feed into the process. And so we're talking about all these things, about painting murals and stuff on walls and making them lovely. And then another part of us who we can't talk to, the public wise, is pulling up telephone poles and wires and things all over the place.
Was that a question?
Yes, of course. Is there a way that the public can feed into this, which would be a council activity, but we've farmed it out in a way that no longer seems to have a public way of feeding into it? By the public, I mean not a way in public.
My suggestion is that I'm talking to the councillors who are elected by the public, and they should be given new feedback, and then you take that to DCHL into this workshop. I'm unsure, you know.
Counselor Wilson.
I've just got three questions, I think. Aurora, I'm not quite sure if Aurora, I'm sorry, Mr. McKenzie, you gave us a lot of reading to do this weekend. And I'm sorry, I tried to see you this morning, but you were busy when I wasn't. And I should have asked this question first, but it was the last thing, things I read. The, under Aurora, and what comes to me when I go around the city looking at infrastructure, because that's apparently what I do these days. And I see that Aurora or maybe Delta or someone else has come on and done some work straight after we've done work and it digs up my cycleways and changes the paintwork and various things like that. Is that I don't see anything here talking between Aurora and Delta's work and with the bigger council infrastructure. And the general manager of infrastructure is away at the moment, so I haven't been able to ask her either. But is there a piece that could go in here that we look at collaborative work? And it's a bit like the stuff we decided to do at the warehouse, where we're getting everyone in line to look at doing. And so we don't have to reinstate footpaths and we don't have to reinstate roads just after we've done them. But this doesn't speak to it, I know there's words and people talking about it, but should that be in there?
That's something we can definitely look at, I guess, one of the issues we have now with the work Delta does for us, it does very, very little civil construction work, which is digging up the roads and all that, because they've got out of that work. So it is more around them putting the new lamppost up that some people want underground and others want above ground. And effectively, that's what their work is nowadays. It's not digging the road up, you know, that's a downer, Fortun Hogan.
But it could be for Aurora that that work is happening, putting in tubes or pipes or whatever. And that's where, I don't know that we're collaborating particularly well. And I'd love to see, I'm just wondering if this is a time that we should be doing that. I think substantial savings to be made doing it that way.
And I think that's where, with the workshop, those pieces can come through and we can.
Okay, well, I'll leave my other question about Aurora to the workshop, City Forests. I just want to test that I'm reading this correctly. So if I look at the economic return on page 1218, and it says to provide a long-term after-tax return to shareholders on their investment in the company of at least 7%, and then I go to 12.23 and look at the numbers. Is that the shareholders' equity, which part of that return, sorry, should be 7%? And are we anywhere near it?
So effectively what you have with Forests, you have two components, you have the cash dividend and then you have the capital gain. The way you dis, well, the way you value a forest is you have to choose a discount rate. And effectively, the discount rate that's commonly used within the forestry industry is 7%. So effectively, you're getting that 7% return, whether it's a capital gain or the actual dividend, it's a component of either. So, or the total of both of them, I should say.
Okay.
So you might not necessarily see it through the numbers, because they haven't increased the value of the equity because they've revalued the forest. But that's effectively what they do on an annual basis.
Okay, if we're aiming for that, I do believe that we should be able to read that relatively easily. If it's not in the numbers, it should be somewhere, or maybe I've missed it, but it wasn't particularly easy to read. I mean, I was trying to add up, is that the profit after income tax plus the dividend or in the special?
So it's a profit after income tax plus the increase in value of the forest, which isn't actually listed there.
Or somewhere, maybe they have read that in the report. Yeah, okay, okay. And the only other one, and it's a minor one, but I don't understand why you would measure OSH issues, I think, by million hours?
It's normally times per work hour, it's reasonably standard within health and safety circles.
Oh, I understand the measure, but a million, which would be, seemed to me to be a heck of a long time potentially. How many people employed for City Forests?
It includes contractors as well. So it's not just the five or six people employed by City Forests, it's the contractors as well.
I thought a year at 500 would be, 500 workers would be a million hours. I just thought, if you're getting that many incidents, you want to be acting more quickly than a million hours. I mean, I was wondering why not five out of.
Well, it's just a multiplier.
Well, if you've got a problem, it does make a difference. Because if you've got an OSH issue and you're waiting for a million hours to get the 25, then. Okay, well, that's. Okay. I'm relieved to hear that, but it's not exactly how it seems to be written, thank you.
Counselor McTack.
Well, you wish, I'm actually wondering whether or not maybe I hold my points to the workshop. Is it, there's no benefit in highlighting them now as opposed to at the workshop?
There'll be nothing faster, no.
Counselor Van.
I've attended a number of workshops over the years and brought up, for instance, the issues of Jack's Point Laggot, property speculation. The CFO has just recently suggested that there's not much value in looking backwards and that we should look forwards. And I believe very much that we should be forward-looking. However, I don't think that we can be forward-looking unless we really do learn from history. And what worries me is that if we are to have a workshop that's non-public and we're told about the next property development debacle, which I believe is Noble, and we are told.
Counselor Mandis, do you have a question?
Yeah, the question is, how do I answer critics of the DCC who say, hey, we told you about Jack's Point Laggot years before it blew up, we've told you about the Noble property development, what have you done differently? What is going to be done to stop Noble costing us a whole lot of money as well? If I get an answer, if I get an answer in a private meeting, in a non-public meeting, I can't tell the public what the answer is. So how do I, as an elected representative, explain to people that we lost $7 million on Jack's Point Laggot, it looks like we're going to do it again with Noble? And explain how that was able to happen?
So I guess if we take a few steps back, the first thing I'd say is that you need to look at the recommendations that were made. at the recommendations that were made in the Larson report about governance across council. And that clearly indicated that the holding company was too close to the subsidiaries. That split has been clearly made. And you've now got a more significant, greater, robust discussion around issues that have been addressed, so Noble, for example. The second would be the creation of my role, where I'm often the most conflicted person sitting in any room and the fact that I'm trying to look at the best interests of the ultimate shareholder, but also trying to keep the needs of the company so that they can do what they need to do to maintain their cash flow and their organisation's long term. So I think those are two very positive moves. I also think you need to also consider the amount of interaction that happens between DCHL now and council. And the fact that the mayor and Sue, or the CEO, come along to each board meeting, that there's quarterly updates for councillors on the performance of the group. And then you have the statutory requirements, which is then just around the six monthly and annual reports plus the statement of intent. So I think there has been a significant amount of improvement in communication between the two bodies. What assurances can we give you that you're not going to have another Jack's Point? Well, the statement of intent sets out the criteria that they need to report back to DCHL and then to ultimate DCHL to council. If you're not happy or if the council's not happy with that, we then ask that those boards consider those limits be reduced. And I think that's the ultimate, that's your right, or the council's right to do that.
Considering I've been asking questions about the Noble development since last year and still have no idea what losses we're looking at and what the likely projection of that development is, what can I now do? I've kept asking, you say there's a non-public meeting coming up, is that going to come up there? And if it is...
So the discussion at the non-public meeting, well, at the workshop, is around statements of intent.
Okay, so in terms of answering critics of the Noble development, is there anything that you can give us publicly to give us some idea of what the worst case scenario, for instance, might be for the Noble development?
I just pointed out to me that the briefings up to date, whether you went to them or not, about the issue you're referring to have been in non-public and they remain confidential. So that's not appropriate to raise them here.
I accept that. My question is, what do I tell the members of the public who want to know what is going on there? Do I just say, sorry, it's all non-public and I can't tell you anything?
Well, it depends whether you've actually bothered to go to the briefings or not.
No, that's actually irrelevant. Whether I went or not is irrelevant, the question is...
Councillor Vanderbus should ask a question, he would let me answer it. What I'm pointing out is that the issues that you're raising have only been dealt with in non-public and it's not appropriate to raise them here in public.
Is there any point at which I can raise in public the issue over this property development and give people some answers? I've been asking since last year.
No, there is no opportunity to raise something. You're actually comparing two things that are quite different for a start. But the answer to your question is no.
Thank you.
Councillor Page.
Thank you, Bishop. Just my question is, in the Aurora papers, 12.6, the bullet point, second last bullet point on that page. And it refers to capacity upgrades and a phrase that intrigued me. It said, specific power system development proposals. And I'm assuming they are in reticulation rather than generation. Though anybody reading that might be a bit confused and I just wondered if you could confirm what that means. 12.6.
We can't generate, the Commons Commission won't allow us.
Well, maybe that's a question for the CEO's workshop, to see what that means. I mean, I know there's a capacity upgrade going on at Target Peninsula next week.
Yes.
Did they need to say anything more than capacity upgrade?
Possibly not.
Councillor Thompson.
Just, I wanted to pick up two issues. One is the one that councillor Kelvin laboured over for some time. Is it, it's my understanding that if there were, for example, to be something that this council on the basis of public submissions thought to be important that was carried out by Aurora or Delta or anybody else for that matter, that this council, as the shareholder, could engage in a conversation and say, this is what we want you to do. Please tell us what the impact of that on the dividend or the cost structure of the company would be so we can consider whether or not we wish to instruct you in that direction. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Secondly, councillor Vanderbus in his usual reckless and way, point of order.
The point of order is that my manner has been besmirched in a usual manner by councillor Thompson. I don't believe that's appropriate.
Has been besmirched in a what manner, sorry?
He's claimed that I have a usual manner and he's claimed it in pejorative terms. I'd like you to rule whether or not that's acceptable in this...
By his venue, I think it would be wise for councillor Thompson to withdraw the reckless. You have more than one usual manner, so I don't know why restrict himself to one, any one of them.
Very well. Councillor Vanderbus has raised matters that have been held in closed session and that would generally be considered an inappropriate thing to do. But nevertheless, he's done so and therefore it is no longer, that which he has raised is no longer effectively in closed session. So can I, so...
Public knowledge.
Could I, councillor Vanderbus said that he has been repeatedly asking questions for the last year.
Since last year.
Since last year. The casual listener might interpret that to mean that council was neither briefed nor aware nor any other members of council were asking questions or that council had not been kept informed by the directors of the matter which he raises. So can I ask for confirmation that in fact that was not the case? And that in fact, in the same year that councillor Vanderbus says he has been regularly asking questions, this council has been briefed by the directors?
Correct, since last...
That is correct, there's been a number of briefings at councils ahead.
And just also for the sake of correctness, because the casual listener may not necessarily understand the distinction between what councillor Vanderbus alluded to as another property development. Could you confirm whether or not Delta has engaged in another property development?
They have not.
Councillor Benson, please.
Just been asked.
Right, are there any further questions? Would someone like to move the recommendation on page 12? Councillor Wilson, secretary councillor Lord, discussion. Councillor McTavish.
Well, I just wonder in relation to recommendation two, maybe perhaps instead of that we provide comments because I, that we note the upcoming opportunity to provide comments. Because that's what I, I'm not sure that it means a whole lot, number two, as it currently stands.
I'll get to the link too, because I don't get any... That's good. Because we won't have another opportunity.
So just to clarify, councillor McTavish, you're suggesting that if two remains, it should be amended to state that the council is provided with the opportunity to make comments?
That we note that between now and the upcoming workshop, we are invited to make comment. But the mover has indicated she would just withdraw. I just thought it didn't make sense the way that it was being moved.
I'll withdraw it because we've no fair opportunity, we've all been made way out of the public.
Okay, so you're moving recommendation and the secretaries happy with that?
I'm happy with that. I'm happy to also note that we have an upcoming workshop that we can discuss these things.
You move it, happy with it?
Happy to note that as well.
So two becomes that council notes that an impending workshop is planned. Further discussion.
Councillor McTavish.
I'd like to thank staff for establishing that opportunity. It's something that a number of us have been asking for, for a couple of years. And I think it's a big step forward in the relationship between council and the companies to ensure that we do get things like councillor Wilson was alluding to in terms of strategic alignment and making the most of opportunities where they arise. And I think councillor Kelvin has rightly pointed out that there may well be members of the public who would like to see certain things from our companies or less of certain things from our companies. And there is an opportunity over the next month or so to get in contact with councillors, should those be issues that they wish to raise. And then we have the opportunity to flag those up with the company. So I think that's a big step forward and I'd like to thank staff for making that opportunity available to us.
Thank you, councillor Lord.
I just also agree with what councillor McTavish said, but I would also say that I personally am quite happy that it is in private. I'm quite happy to, it doesn't worry me whether it's in private or in public, but I'm quite happy. And I will be satisfied on a personal level to have the opportunity in private.
Thank you. No further discussion, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Get it. Carry. Item 13, Dunedin City Holdings Limited, Dunedin Venues Limited Financials for the six months ended 31st of December 2014.
We'll just take questions, I think.
Questions. Would someone like to move the recommendation? Moves to councillor Stain, second to councillor Moon. There is none, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. 14, Dunedin City Holdings Limited Company Financials for six months ended 31st of December 14. Questions? This is, these were the subject of the presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago. All right, someone like to move, secretary, councillor Lord?
I just noticed in the Delta accounts, I was trying to work out, I can't find the page now, hang on. Yeah, on page 29 of the Delta accounts, I was just wondering, I was trying to work out with the, and all that sort of stuff, but I see they've got gratuities as current liabilities and non-current liabilities of, you know, $350,000 and $89,000. Could you just give me any idea what sort of gratuities they are?
Sorry, what page?
Page 29 of the Delta.
Normally they'll be for employee entitlements.
Entitlements, so that's different to the other provisions in the long service leave.
Yes, because they're long-term.
Yep. So, for example, in item 16, in the notes to the financial statements, it says gratuity is $350,000. So that's not long service leave, so what might be a gratuity?
So gratuity will be, normally it would be employees' conditions. And if they've been there for a certain level of amount of time, they'll get a gratuity. This one here is...
So that'd be like an extra week of leave?
Yes, often, often more generously.
So it's a long service leave?
Yeah, it's separate.
And what would be the difference between a current liability and a non-current liability?
So the longer term or non-current is more than a year, the current is within the current financial year.
I see, so that just simply means that something that hasn't been aired, but it's held over for a period of time.
Yes. The issue you have there is those gratuities will change over time depending on the entitlements due and also the discount rate, because you have to value them in today's dollars.
Right, been moved, is there a second? Councillor Wilson, discussion. It's been done, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Councillors, we will obviously be getting together for the extraordinary meeting on the 24th of March.